This is, uh, I'm going to open the workshop, uh, for the county commissioners. On Thursday, May fifteenth, it's ten thirty, uh, ish, at thirty-two. Uh, so, right off the bat, we'll take anybody from the audience that wants to come up and, and talk. Please state your name and address for the record, if you would.
Good afternoon, or good morning, commissioners. Good morning, Mr. Beveridge, good morning, Mr. Plachnik, did I say it right?
Plachnik.
Plachnik, got it, and Mr. Regovich. I brought three items today of historical significance to Lake County. The first one is a full-page article of the Telegraph, which is newspaper we used to have in Lake County. It's July seventeenth, nineteen seventy-eight, and it's me taking a reporter up into the clock tower. And I take him all through the clock tower, even up the eighty-foot ladder in the center. He loved it, I loved it, because I was, uh, day custodian at the courthouse. And I knew that courthouse like the back of my hand. And basically, if I didn't get to work over the doors, the judges would have me tarred and feathered. They were awesome, I love working there. Um, I had twenty-six point seven years in, and then the diabetes and, uh, they onset epilepsy took over. The epilepsy's under control, um, but I do have low sugar. And when it gets low, that's why I'm trying to get a vest for my dog for service. That way, you're put my glucose and that, and then when I sit down, my puppy will come over. I take my orange, five minutes later, I'm good as new, no ambulance, I'm saving money. Which, I'm on Medicare, uh, you know, I'm over sixty-five. And I would like to present that Telegraph article. The second article of the clock in the center, they used to send the county auction all the weird stuff that pile up. That clock sat in Judge Park's courtroom between, right up in the jury seat on the west wall. You had the jury here, the window here, window here, and it sat up there. And it's, uh, it's an electric motor. And every day, I had to go in the jury and get a ladder and keep, every day it would run like an hour and a half off. Finally Judge Park says, get it out of here, take it to auction. So I, I sent it to the pile, they auctioned it out, I think I paid like five dollars for it. And, you know, I want to keep it for history. Now, the third item I want to present to you is near and dear to my heart. The, the third item I wanted, Mr. Plachnik, Mr. Regovich, Mr. Beveridge. This is the two, two-hundredth anniversary nineteen seventy-six flag that flew to courthouse the entire year. And at the end of the year, I said, Mr. Crown, or whatever the administrator was, I asked, what do you want to do with the flag? He said, oh, just throw it away. And I'm like, I'm not throwing it away. So I kept it all these years. And I'm presenting you with this flag. So, um, when you celebrate the two-hundred-and-fifty anniversary of our country, I am such an American, I'm proud to be an American. And everybody is just happy. I had, um, back surgery, May first. My, my L one, L two, L three, L four, they, they, my back just broke. I was paralyzed on the waist down. They took me from Chari Point to university. I had, three AM, I met the whole neuro team, and they're like, we're going to take good care of you. And I'm like, please. And after a day, a day and a half of fog after surgery, I snapped out of it. I was up and walking, going to the bathroom. The next three, four days I was in the hospital, I sat in my chair the entire day. I was watching the Westerns on the Western Channel, and that's worse than soap operas. So I was watching them, and I wanted to present these, um, things. Now, if you could present that, sir, thank you.
So I'd like to give your background a little bit. So most of what you're talking about was, I know before Commissioner Plachnik was, uh, born, and maybe even-
Yeah. Well, I'll, I'll give you a little background on myself. Um, I started working in nineteen seventy-four. My mom worked at the auditor's office for Dan Sepanik. She said they're hiring at the court for custodians. So I went up to Mr. Crown's office, I interviewed, he said, well, can you start? He said, tomorrow, if you want. And it was like a Wednesday, and he goes, we're going to start you on a Thursday. The commission meeting's not for four or five days for your resolution. And Mr. Crown said, I only want you to do one thing. I said, yes, Charlie. He says, cut your hair, be a normal. I said, I'm going to the barber right now. I was so happy. And I worked, started to, uh, night shift on the courthouse. Then I became day shift. And at six in the morning, I'm driving in, open the courthouse, it's dark, I turn on the lights on, open all the rooms, judges, make sure everything's safe. And then all the judges, I knew them all by heart, Judge Clare, Judge Parks, you know, Judge Avalone. And they were all great people, and they were just fun to work with. And a funny story is, um, Judge Mitovich, he's a little, he was a little testy at times. And he took the key away from everybody, had the key lock changed. And he came in one day with his, um, bailiff, and none of them had his key. And the funny part is, he couldn't get in, because he took the keys from us. And I says, Judge, um, please turn around. I took, um, my picket, which is in my belt with all that thing, I picked, in my second side, the door opened. And he's like, how'd you do that? And I says, because I'm the guy that works at the courthouse, and I want to make you happy. But I started in seventy-four, I started night shift, once a day shift. I also had work on the side, I was doing carpentry. I became a carpenter in maintenance, and I worked my way up. And in September of two thousand and one, which is very solemn month for everybody, because of the trade centers and that. I was placed on disability. And I only needed three years of disability to meet my thirty years, and I was like, yay. And I am just a happy person, and I'm like, my back, there's no pain, and I'm just so happy. And my physical therapist just says, take up music. So I got a whole drum set in my garage, we're, we're laying out the whole deluxe thing. I mean, and like on Saturday, Saturday, Saturday Night Live, you want cowbell, I got cowbell, the whole nine yards. And I'm going to play softly-
Much like our current proteins and lands, guys.
And I'm going to play it softly, but they said it's good therapy doing that with your arms, your legs and stuff. Because I'm not supposed to, no bending, no twisting, no turning, no picking up more than two pounds. And I'm like, yes. And next week, I started therapy at the Brunner-Sandberg Deacon Center by Minter High School. And they have an eighty-degree heated pool, and I've been there before, and I love it too. So I'm going to get very intense therapy to get my back. But my L one, two, three, four, five, they put cadaver bone in there, and then they put like these little pillows, and it's all space-age stuff. There's no screws, there's no rods, there's no bolts. And it's like, here I am, a testament, walking, May first, I had a surgery. And here I am, walking, and I just praise Jesus, praise Mary, and I'm a happy person. And, um, this ends my, um, thing, and I hope you guys have a Mr. Plachnik.
Touch.
Plachnik.
You got it.
All right, Mr. Beveridge, Mr. Regovich, enjoy. Um, I also couldn't find, because my niece Sherry works at Human Services, and I don't know, she's talked to Mr. Regovich. And Sherry is like, Uncle Mike, Uncle Mike, where's your twenty-five-year watch? And I dug everywhere, and I think I found it, it was just the watch without the bands. And I dug, 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 I can't find it. So I did have the watch that said twenty-five years of service, and it was kind of a joke. But that's the end of my presentation.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Well, uh, actually, we have a twenty-fifty-
Committee tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Actually, not tomorrow, next Thursday, next Thursday.
So we will, uh-
Yes.
Pretty much show them the flag and what we can do with that, and the other items, we will, uh, I'd love to see them at, especially the clock at home in the courthouse, maybe. Uh, so we'll reach out to the judges-
I will take you up there and show you everything, if you want, I will give you, if they unlock the doors, I'll take you on a tour.
We're going to put the Commissioner Beveridge up in the tower.
By the way, there's only one screw currently holding up the ladder, the last step.
There's only one bolt, but it's like a one-inch thick bolt, so it kind of wiggles going up.
It's been there for you ever since you were born.
It's been there for over a hundred years. I've been up and down that ladder a thousand times. I think I have my name, Mike Levin, in seventy-four, in the rafter there somewhere.
There you go.
And, but yeah, the clock tower, that wood room, where the main pentium is, that would be awesome for that there. So I had to run, I got a physical therapy, meet me at home.
Again.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, commissioners. You guys have an awesome day, and you're doing awesome work. Love you all.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Okay, anybody else in here? I see, uh, Bishop Maribel?
Yes. Gerard Mebel, ten forty-nine Brentwood Drive, Pensville, Ohio. Commissioners, I'm so pleased and so very happy, uh, this season, to see that we have a new pope, un-American pope. And when I was becoming a bishop, uh, the commissioner sent a resolution for me. And at that time, uh, Timothy Dolan, the cardinal, uh, did, uh, did ordain and license, the person that came from New York, his name was Newton Heinz. And Newton Heinz was licensed and ordained by, uh, Timothy, uh, Dolan. And Timothy Dolan, Timothy Dolan, Cardinal Timothy Dolan, was, uh, if I'm not mistaken, was appointed, was appointed by Pope Benedict. And after Pope Benedict resigned and went home to glory, uh, Timothy Dolan, Cardinal Timothy Dolan, went to Rome to help elect Pope Francis. And now Pope Francis is gone to glory, and now we have Pope Leo. So I'm very happy, uh, to be connected not only to the Christian faith, but also to one point three billion Catholics. So it's a real blessing, uh, to be alive, to see this in my lifetime. Thank you.
Thank you, I know he's, uh, from the Chicago area.
Yes.
And he's a, uh, a White Sox fan, so the Guardians get to see him a couple, a bunch of times a year.
Yes.
Uh, so if they start doing real well with the White Sox, we know why.
Yes.
How about the auditor?
What do you want to talk about, Commissioner?
Anything you wish.
Well, let me start with this, um, for Commissioner Beveridge. Um, I need you to look at your calendar for probably late June, if there is three or four days that you can set aside where I'm gonna- For, for one week, I'd like to sit a second BOR panel. And I'd like it to be you, Trezor, Zern, and me, just because it will save us money on salaries and having other folks. So if you can look at your schedule, give me some dates on there.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Um-
I know you were trying to wear out the current panel.
I mean, I, we are grinding and through, and we're making good progress, but, you know, we have these cases that we're trying to get through by the end of July. And so, um, it would be helpful on certain types of cases, with the three of us, since we are budget-free, um, do a bunch of them. And we load up, we'll need the commission to help out.
I believe you meant to say budget neutral.
Budget neutral.
Budget neutral.
We're already getting paid, so this way, if it's you, me, and Zern, we don't have to pay anybody else to come in.
There you go.
Um, I don't know, you guys want to talk about House Bill fifteen, you want to talk about budget, anything you're interested in wanting to know?
Uh, maybe an update on House Bill fifteen, I know there's, uh-
It's gone to the governor. Uh, the legislature is very busy patting themselves on the back. Uh, I think long-term, it'll be very painful for Ohio taxpayers, residential taxpayers. Not, not today, not tomorrow, a decade from now, when the people that passed it are all gone. Um, they're going to devalue new energy generation, and they're going to devalue existing, ultimately, assets converted. And slack on that stuff is going to get picked up by Bob and Benny Buck. And nobody seems to grasp that will come downhill ten years from now.
And so, am I correct that, what, the language that we saw that was put in on the amendments, and et cetera, et cetera? That equipment that is currently in place, that is replaced, equipment that is currently in place, if it is replaced, we still keep the twenty-four, twenty-five percent valuation on it, correct?
Yeah, we do.
Mr. Auditor, can I have you come to the microphone, because you're not getting picked up on the recording?
Oh, yeah, that's your fault.
Well, that's, that's why I asked you to come on.
If you watch your-
Probably my problem.
If you watch your platform, we at least got to hear it.
We never go to the auditor's meetings.
You can hear me, this is for your ears. You can hear me just fine.
No, yeah, so the amendment was put in-
So Jerry put in an amendment on that, and it protected the existing power plants in terms of the definition of, of, it required, you know, eighty percent of a facility has to basically be redone in order for it to be considered new or repowered. So-
Okay.
Now, I will say that we appreciate the effort. I, I would say, you know, to be intellectually-
Honest.
Honest about it, is that it, that still comes down to potentially, if, if a power company like Vistra wanted to challenge, it's still going to come down to a court, and therefore a judge deciding what that means. Um, you know, what's, what's, you know, what's new? Does the judge think that the, the new is the concrete and the cooling towers? And if it's not new, that goes into the equation of, towards that eighty percent, and therefore it'll never be quote-unquote new? We don't know, right? I mean, we're into new territory here.
And that amendment and provision was applied to the, was the TPP, tangible personal property, right?
Yep.
Which is self-reported.
Correct, that's, that's, that has always been the problem in Ohio.
And so theoretically, if I have this wonderful machine here that is worth fifty million dollars-
Mm-hmm.
And I come in and I put this new machine right here that cost me twenty million dollars, that makes this machine worthless?
I am not an energy company accountant, but I would guess that they will do everything they can to figure out a means of making, of writing down, of writing down the value of their personal property.
Correct, correct, correct.
Now, I will say this, that when, when the energy companies on any front devalue, it goes to the taxation, taxation reviews and decides what they're going to do, right? Whether they're going to accept the self-reporting value or not, okay? To be blunt, historically, in my opinion, taxation is mostly rubber-stamped all those. Um, I don't know with extra scrutiny whether they will going forward, I don't know, it's going to depend on the next administration, et cetera, et cetera.
Taxation, you mean Ohio-
Department of Taxation, yeah. Um, I will say though, that when taxation does make a ruling, the only one who has authority to appeal that ruling is the county auditor. So I will be watching it, we'll be watching it, we'll be, you know, we've had these conversations with our other county auditors that have power plants and infrastructure. Um, as I have pointed out in the past, First Energy, Vistra, they're all eagerly trying to write down their transmission infrastructure dollars. A few years ago, Energy Harbor wrote down Davis-Bessie like eighty percent on their, on their PPP, on their TPP. Um, they didn't do it to Perry, I don't know why. I was always wondering when that shoe would drop. So the reality is, yeah, we're getting eaten alive from both ends. We're getting eaten alive on the, uh, on the valuation on the real estate, we're getting eaten alive on the valuation of the PPP or the TPP. And keep in mind, I mean, just so people know, that's like two-point-two million dollars of revenue for Perry Schools, just on TPP. Like, that's a lot of money. Um, that again becomes, somebody has to make that up.
And once again-
It's the taxpayers.
In here in either Perry or Lake County.
And if you are a class-two property in the Perry taxing district, i.e. commercial industrial, if, if Vistra's request to devalue the plant were to be granted, if you, if you're class-two, your taxes are going way up. So, I mean, this is the reality of what we're dealing with. I, I don't think anyone argues that Ohio needed to do something to help spur on additional electric generation in this state. Put us at the forefront. What?
Base.
Base?
Oh, no, there you go, there you go.
I'm half-deaf, I didn't even hear it, I had no idea.
Just a good head.
Yeah, it's just that, it's just a good head. So anyway, I mean, that's, look, I mean, we are playing defense, right? As our auditor's association lobbyists said after House Bill fifteen, and we were successful in getting some changes, not only one, you know, on the front end, we had some changes initially when the bill dropped, then we got this, you know, the Serena Amendment. You know, they were like, this is a, you know, great victory, we, you know, great job, you know, great job by the team, it's a big victory. And I'm like, only you guys can make a loss try to make it feel like a victory. You know, it, it, from, from a standpoint of where the bill started, when it was first drafted and dropped, made a lot of progress. We actually did, we protected a lot of people, short-term.
I understand that, but-
No, I get it, I share the same frustrations.
Going from two broken legs and two broken arms down to one broken leg and one broken arm, a very good day.
Yeah. I, as we put it, we, the bill that we viewed as a negative five became a zero, right? Not exactly a great rating.
So it's currently on the governor's desk?
I believe so, yeah, I don't think he signed it yet.
If he doesn't sign it, then the tax burden-
I don't know if he'll, maybe he, maybe he could be spurred into some line item vetoes, I don't know.
But what I'm asking is, is the taxes that we're talking about that are going to go up if this goes through and these things happen, that's going to have to be bore by Perry and Lake County.
Mm-hmm.
If they just stayed the way they were, it would be picked up by thirteen states' worth of customers that use the energy.
Yep.
So, so thirty-three, I believe it was unanimous in the Senate, thirty-three state senators felt-
I believe there were only two members of the legislature that actually voted against it.
So a hundred and thirty out of a hundred and thirty-two members of our state legislature felt that it was a better idea to make our county and our municipalities pick up more property taxes than it was to let thirteen states' worth of customers combine bear that expense, correct?
I would say that that is accurate, based on their votes.
Thank you.
Um-
The first guy had much happier, fun stuff to talk about.
I'm sorry, I, I rarely am ever the bearer of great news for you guys, I realize. I, you know, I show up and you must think like, God, it's like the Grim Reaper.
And I've asked that, if you come in with bad news, you've got to give us solutions. Now on, I need solutions.
Dude, I, I am the solution man, and I have, uh-
Remember, I'm Commissioner Positive.
Nobody has, um, I'll pat my association on the back on this, my, um, my, my folks, my team, there was nobody else fighting on these issues, right? Only the auditors. The school districts were asleep at the wheel, the municipalities were asleep at the wheel, the CCAO was asleep at the wheel. Nobody else showed up to lobby on these critical massive tax issues, no one. Not any entity that was going to be, get crushed. Only the auditors association showed up and said, whoa, we got a problem. It would have been helpful had others joined in, but honestly, we had a conversation with like the school folks, and they were like, I'm sorry, what was going on? The bill's already through the House and onto the Senate, and they don't even know what's going on. And I'm like, you're about to get kicked in the pants, and you guys are asleep at the wheel. No, I get it, it's triage down there right now in budget season. There are so many bills and so many amendments and so many things flying around, that everybody's on the defensive, trying to do this, trying to do that, trying to protect that. It, it is hard to keep track of everything.
You get two bills a day coming out of Estebul.
Some of them are pretty good. Um, and, and, and I've been down there lobbying on, on some of those bills. I've had conversations last week with a number of senators. Um, just had a conversation late last week with the Senate Budget Director on some of the tax relief. So let, yeah, let me give you some of the positives, right? I mean, we're pushing hard on the auditor's solutions, I know I previously sent you a breakdown on that. Um, and we continue to, we've had some good progress on that front. Um, I'm hopeful that the Senate's going to drop some stuff into the budget that might give us things like House Bill nine-twenty, twenty mil floor relief. Um, you know, and some other, some other reforms that we can get right now, before we get into all of Representative Thomas's bills. I think there's an opportunity there, I know the Senate is looking at it, I know the Senate is also serious about budget commission reforms. Um, and so they've been more interested all along in the budget commission reforms than the House ever was. So I'm hopeful that we're make, we're slowly making some progress here. We've got, you know, we've got till, you know, mid-June before the Senate looks to pass that bill and go to conference. So we, we continue to grind away. Um, and I remain hopeful that we'll make some progress to get some actual meaningful reform for our taxpayers. Um, but again, jury's still out on that.
So we're not going to see the Senate's version until late June?
I think you're going to see it early, early, mid-June, right? Um, and then we're going to get into probably a week or two of conference committee. And then, you know, fling it over to the governor around July one. Um, we all know what goes into conference committee could be, God only knows what, right? I mean, that's, that's a scary time, and it's also an opportunity time, right? Because there are times when you can get stuff in there that never went through any committee. And it's something that we want, maybe we get it through with leadership, drops it in there in conference, and it's voted out. And it never had a hearing, it never, nothing, you know? So it's scary, but I also, I, sometimes I don't hate the opportunities. And, you know, we have pretty good, you know, we, you know, we have our senator in the room, Ms. S, S, S Finance Chair. He will be in those conference committee, you know? So I mean, I think there's opportunities there for us to get some real property tax reform. I know the Senate's pretty serious about it. So at least in my conversation with staff, they are interested in doing some stuff. So, you know, I, again, I'll try to be optimistic auditor, how's that? Not always doom and gloom, that I'm going to remain hopeful that we can maybe get some things done. I don't think we're going to get all the things we want to get down on property tax reform, but if we can get one or two big ones, that would be a huge help.
That's how it works.
I mean, we're, we're all fighting, you know, and when it comes to legislature, we're always fighting a thousand battles all at once, multi-front wars, amendments, people lobbying against what you, what you're trying to do, corporate interests, you know? It's, it's a moving target always, it's always been that way. And so we just, we just have to continue to grind and exercise our relationships as best we can. And I get frustrated, as you can tell, with stuff that, you know, the energy bill frustrated me. I get their motivation. I mean, they wanted to put Ohio at the front on new generation, they wanted to put House Bill six behind them, that's what they were desperate to do. I continued to argue to them that they did not need to make any changes to the taxation structure to accomplish what they wanted, but-
Right, write them a little baiting for ten years.
But, right, I mean, they-
On the private side-
They didn't need to do any of that stuff, but they, they were, they got convinced by quote-unquote, you know, experts, that this is all part of the package, right? And I, you know-
Those experts happen to provide the power.
Yeah, right. So, I, you know, again, I, listen, I will say this, I think there is some, there's some good stuff, I think, in that energy bill. I think there's some stuff that's questionable. Um, but I'm not an expert on those things, the things I, I, I try to be an expert on and play an expert on TV is, um, is on the tax part, is I, you know, try to get our hands around it. So, um, that was only, that was the only part of the bill that we spoke to, which was, hey, you know, you got to think- You know, gotta think long-term. Long-term, if everything happens the way you want it to, it's going to result in higher property taxes for Ohio residents. Period.
We're not gonna have property taxes.
Maybe, maybe not.
Money we'll be saving the auditor's office.
Yeah, right. Um, yeah, I don't know where that'll go. Hmm. Well, John and I have talked about it. I mean, I don't, you know. We'll, we'll see. I mean, there's a lot of mechanics in there to putting that issue on the ballot and then the public's gotta be convinced. It failed in South Dakota. Um, when, when they were faced with it, and I think the public voted against that because the, the devil they knew was better than the devil they didn't know and was undefined. And they were staring into the abyss of what, there was no plan post getting rid of property taxes. And enough people in South Dakota said, well, I may not like property taxes, but I don't know what that means. So.
So I, I believe that's my issue in a lot of cuts is that, all right, what, what do you do instead of?
Correct.
What are the other options? We don't get a lot of that. Like, I'm just gonna do this.
Yeah.
And then what's the fallout?
Right.
And no one looks at that, I feel.
Yeah, and I'm, just for the record, I'm not, I, I'm not against the initiative in any way. I, I might be fully on board with it. But as I've told the organizers, I need to understand what comes after before I can sign off on something. That's all. Like I, I feel like that's my responsibility as an elected official, is to say, hey, okay. You know, I mean, as I flippantly told Mr. Massey, I'm like, you wanna get rid of half of my job? That's great. It's gonna make my life easier. Right? But I, again, we're back to, what does that look like? Tripling income taxes? 15 cents ad on the dollar in state sales tax? Like what is the, what's? What, what is that, right? So I mean, I, I think we need to know and then, and then I think, you know, there has to be a plan. So, on, on where you go with it. And again, I'm, I'm not necessarily opposed to it. But I wanna know what it looks like on the other side. Um, I, I might be the biggest cheerleader if you come up with a good plan on the other, on the backend. But I don't know what that plan, no one has presented it. And organizers of the effort have said to me directly, well, it's up to the legislature to figure that out. And we just had a conversation about their processes. So I, I don't, I don't know. My, I, and I think my bigger issue becomes. Beyond the tax component, right? There's the, you know, I can cut. 22 billion dollars of taxes here and raise them over here. We can all figure that out, right? My, my concern does become. Local control and local government, having to now go in a system where all the money flows through Columbus. And beg for dollars for your fire department, for your library, for your police department. I, that, that right now is, whether you like them or not, property taxes are local control, right? People either vote for a levy or they don't vote for a levy. If, if it's now sales taxes all flowing to Columbus. And then there's some sort of board or something that's gonna turn around and divvy out dollars that you used to be able to rely on. Steadfastly on funding your fire department, but now every year you have to go and beg for it or something. That's not gonna be a good model. I don't, I would argue that's not a conservative model. Cause there's no local control. So I think that's also a hurdle that has to be addressed in this is. How do you not, how do you, how do you avoid? Creating a real mess for local governments? And look, John and I have talked about this. Part of that picture may end up being you've, you're gonna have to consolidate. You're gonna have to slash government. You're gonna have to consolidate. Maybe there's a lot of villages that need to go away. I don't know. Right? I mean, there may have to be a lot of that stuff under that type of system, but I think that if you're gonna be intellectually honest about it, that's, that's what you're looking at. You're gonna have to look at the big picture of, okay. Do we have, I've always argued we have too much government in Ohio, right? We have too many layers. We have state, we have county, we have local. Most states have like state or county. Or state and local. Like county government is like the recorder of deeds and judges and that's it. Right? They, they have commissioners that do very, you know, in, in some states, it's, if things fall to the town. You know, they're the ones that handle all the stuff at the local level. There is no county government doing sewers and water and none of that. Ohio has figured out how to create multiple layers of government. And it's, it's a hindrance for us in terms of taxes for sure. So if you're gonna talk about reforming taxes, you gotta talk about reforming government. And then you also have to address school funding. So it's, it's, it's multi-layered. I think it's a conversation worth having. I love having this conversation, right? Because it does make a lot of people uncomfortable, right? But it, it needs to happen in this state. We have too many layers. We have, you know, we have local Rita and income tax, right? There's a, there's a push to, again, to. Have those collections go through the Department of Taxation, not through hundreds and hundreds of local agencies where if you're a plumber. And you do work in 14 towns this month, and you have to file taxes in 14 jurisdictions, that's insane. That's a bad system. And I know you go to mayors and you go to the municipal league and they will fight tooth and nail to stop Columbus from taking that over. Right? Again, back to local control, but at the same time, from a business standpoint, it's horrific.
Mr. President, to the auditor's point, there are only two states in the U.S. that have local income taxes in the majority of their municipalities, Ohio and Pennsylvania. The next closest state where a plurality, a large number of municipalities have local income taxes is Maryland. And no one else is even close. You have a city here, a city there in the entire state. For instance, New York City is one of only a few in the state of New York that has a municipal income tax. It is a horrendous imposition on businesses. And I don't even think we can quantify, I don't think there's a way to calculate how many businesses. Found out they had to file 30 different returns and pay an extra 2, 3% and just went to Kentucky instead. I mean, literally, as long as your choice is anything other than Ohio or Maryland, you can avoid the local income tax and all the complexity and extra cost. By just going to another state. I think that that's been the default choice. It's one of the many reasons why Ohio has shrunk over the years. And we've lost our standing as really the capital of the Midwest. Uh, it's unfortunate and it's understandable why mayors and councils, I say this as a former councilperson. Are very nervous about the idea of the state collecting the tax. It's because John Kasich stole the local government fund to fake balance his budget. In reality, he was a big liberal spender. He just took all the money from local government and spent it himself and said, oh, look, we have a surplus. In reality, there was no surplus. He spent more, he saved less, but he robbed the local government's blind. So when you tell them, we'll collect it for you, it'll be more efficient. No one believes you because they all remember that Governor Kasich stole the money. And, you know, you look at the property tax issue, I think it's a natural consequence of the state legislature. Being so out of touch that they talk about exempting power plants. But they don't wanna talk about exempting seniors or increasing the homestead exemption in a meaningful way. The reality is, there's still an opportunity to have a thoughtful solution that's legislated. If the state legislature gets serious, but I will say, none of the bills that are currently pending in Columbus are big enough. To derail the movement to abolish property tax, property taxes. They're all, to say they're half measures would be generous. They improve the system, there's no doubt, but not enough. And I think that if everybody wakes up, they get out of the right side of the bed and they go, wow. Taxpayers are PO'd enough that they could take all of our property tax revenue away. They need to kind of reset the board and understand. You're basically offering to pay $50,000 for a million dollar house. You know, your offer is nowhere near high enough. Now, if they recalibrate and they understand, if I offer 900,000 for a million dollar house, we might make a deal. I, I think you could see a very positive solution come out of the legislature. I just don't think they've gotten the seriousness of it yet.
I, I think some have and some, some are sort of not there yet. I mean, I, I agree with that. But I guess when I talk about, you know, depending on where we go with it, you know, if you're gonna talk about. You know, we have conflicting things, right? We have a gubernatorial candidate who said, I wanna get rid of income tax in Ohio. We have leaders of this property tax initiative that one of their solutions is to increase income tax. To help pay, offset the property tax. We have conflicting directives and what people are trying to aim and do.
But to that point, and no offense, Commissioner Plushnick, if we get rid of income taxes and we get rid of property taxes.
It's 42 billion dollar hole that you have to figure out how to fill.
What are we doing?
Well, I, I guess it's 25 cents on the dollar on, on, on the sales tax. I don't know how you.
If we, if we get rid of income, we're getting rid of property, we're left with a sales tax of 15, 20%.
I, I would actually say, and I'd love to know the tax professor's opinion on this. If we were going to, let's say, if part of the equation. Of eliminating property taxes in Ohio was gonna be a component of increasing income taxes, okay? Um, would it make sense at that moment? To abolish local income tax and roll it into the state income tax?
Opposite.
And then absolutely get rid of.
Abolish the state income tax and let it become local so that we have more control.
Well, I mean, again, so, right, so here's, so here's a perfect example, right? You'll get people that'll argue that and you'll get people that'll argue the opposite side. I, and again, I don't, we're just sort of.
Districts cannot, school districts can pass.
They can, yeah. School districts can have an income tax. That's also been proposed.
There is, there is a way to have your cake and eat it too. It's just a matter of, it's a matter of proving to people that their money will be there. It is infinitely more efficient for the state to collect a tax than for every municipality to collect it. That is a given. It's more efficient from the perspective of the filer who has one system, one form, one set of rules. And it's more efficient just in terms of collecting the tax. After you've paid your expenses, there's more money left over. It is cheaper to collect taxes through one tax collector than through hundreds. So in a perfect world, Ohio collects the tax, the localities decide how to spend it.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I would be a proponent of Ohio collecting all of the income tax, but they don't keep any. If the income tax, I mean, they gotta have a computer and a spreadsheet, right? This guy lives in Metter, he paid his income taxes, this dollar amount goes back to Metter.
You, 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 you make a great point. Um, I think John makes a great point and it shows you why this debate. If it comes around, is gonna be so challenging.
And, and I think it's back to your point that there's no leadership on this. And I think that the answer is in between all three, right? I don't like property taxes. I don't like income taxes. I don't like sales taxes. But you know what? Property taxes. I'm assuming have an adverse effect on our senior citizens and those that are retired that just own a home and maybe necessarily don't have an income, right? And so having the burden on the property taxes punishes them. The burden, whatever the figure is, needs to be a third, a third, a third to be fair share, right? So those of us that are consuming more, are paying more in sales taxes, great, we're chipping in. Those of us that are still working and have an income can pay more in income taxes, then we can fill that slot so that it's not just. A property tax. And these are the conversations that Jason and I have been having with a lot of our municipal partners in the community. Listen, you gotta be smart in how you're taxing. If, if, if this organization can only pass a property tax levy. Then the schools and the other institutions that can pass property or sales or income. Need to be cognizant of that and have the type of leadership to have that conversation with a solution. If the next governor wants to come in and get rid of the income tax for the state, great. Then he also, or she also needs to be an advocate for how the local governments are going to make that up and offer a solution.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Honest with the voters.
I would say the same thing about income tax that I, that I've said about property tax. I'm, I'm not necessarily opposed. I need to see what the plan is on the backend, like. I'm not here saying our system is great or perfect or by any stretch of the imagination. Um, I have issues with a whole lot of elements of it, but to your point, both of your gentleman's point is that it's going to be a robust debate. And, um, it's gonna be interesting to see where it comes out. Because if we do end up with a governor and a legislature that wants to change one type of tax or another. There has to be spending cuts, government reform, change in who pays what. It's all, you know, and then you have winners and losers in that, right? I mean, you know, for the folks that wanna get rid of property taxes, ultimately, if it gets to the ballot box. I would suggest that the greatest opposition to that will probably be corporations. Property taxes are easily accounting, stable accounting thing for them to understand and to, to, to calculate. If there's question marks on income tax and stuff, corporations are far less interested in income tax than they are property tax. That's them. Their interests are different than seniors. Right? And so you're gonna have competing interests in Columbus saying one thing or another, this is how we ought to do it. So it, it, I mean, we're, in some ways, it's kind of fun, right? I mean, doesn't the, the, the academic in you kind of, kind of enjoy it? Like, I mean, it's kind of like, well, this is interesting. I mean.
Some of us do like how the sausage is made.
I mean, it's, you know.
Seen him pep here.
I mean, I mean, look, it's, it is, it is, it, it can be frustrating, but at the same time, it's interesting times. Um, that we're gonna end up, I believe, whether the issue on the property tax gets to the ballot or not. I believe it, it's more likely to spur some, some movement within the legislature. What that ends up being, I don't know, but I think there's gonna be some changes. I think there's enough motivation for some changes. And so that puts also then us as county government. On our feet to make sure that what we're doing, uh, you know, from a budget standpoint, et cetera, et cetera. Is, is smart. So, you know, from that standpoint, I, I applaud you guys on your, your desire to. Flatline the budget for the next couple of years.
Budget neutral.
Because, okay, budget neutral, flatline, whatever.
Branding.
Uh, branding, okay, yeah. So, um, I think that's smart because we don't know where all this is going. Right? We don't know where impact on tariffs is going. We don't know what the economy's doing in the next couple of years. We're, you know, we don't know where all this tax debate is going. So I think the commissioners are wise to. Create a neutral budget going forward for the next two years. Um, to put Cat, Lake County in a very conservative and defensive position. Um, in the event that things go in directions that we necessarily don't want them to go, so.
I could tell you, coming from a community that's gets probably half its income from income tax and the other half from property tax. Uh, the scariest thing at every community is probably 60 to 70% of their budgets is for public safety.
Yeah.
And you're really looking, when you talk about major cuts, that, it doesn't matter what age you are. I mean, everyone's, uh, 911 calls are up every year, uh, mostly ambulance related. Uh, that, you know, that's a need and, and something we use in, in our county, in our society. And we see things that we had never seen in the past, uh, through police departments and so. To make major cuts, that's what you're talking about.
Yeah.
So I, I'm hoping, you know, we look at that, the state looks at that, you know, you're gonna make a big change. And everybody hates change, but sometimes change is needed, sometimes change is good.
Well, I would say that.
Use, like you said, show me the alternative.
Right.
How do I maintain those kinds of things?
And, and as you know, it's not all apples to apples when it comes to local government, right? Um, New Hampshire has, is considered the lowest tax state in the country. They have no income tax. They have no sales tax. Um, they have fees and they have property tax. That's it. Um, it is a low tax haven. Man, if you don't like taxes, live in New Hampshire. But, and as someone who owns property there and has relatives there, I would tell you that. There's also a lot of dirt roads. There's a lot of county and state roads that are in. A condition that people around here would not find acceptable. It's accepted there. Um, the legislature, the House and the Senate in New Hampshire are in session, you know, one month a year. Um, it is a.
Like one month too long.
It's, it's a different, it's different, right? So when you see people compare states to states, like, like, you know, my father lives there. And. I always worry, you talk about ambulance, right? What's your response time? What's your ISO rating in Willowick? Three, four? High.
Less than four minutes is responsible.
Yeah. My father lives in an affluent town with a volunteer fire department. He has low taxes. But I also know that ambulance is probably 20 to 25 minutes away. Literally, cause somebody's gotta get the call on their beeper, race to the fire station, get in the equipment. And then race to the other side of the town, cause the fire station's on the other side of the town he lives in. There's not multiple stations, there's one. Right? And, and those volunteers are gonna race there, right? We, we have a standard around here that we've accepted and we pay for it. We do pay for it, right? But I think folks on the, you know, so it's, it's, I guess my point is it's, it's important to not. Say like, well, this state does it this way or this state, understand that it comes with pros and cons, right? Um, if you expect the fire department to show up within seven minutes. Um, if you expect the fire department to show up within seven minutes, you know, which is generally considered a really respectable response time, you know, you're not gonna see that in rural, low-tax type of places, right? I mean, it's different, so we can't, I guess my point is, we can't compare our, what we do to necessarily what some other state or other county or the community somewhere else in the country does. We have to have, you know, we have to understand that we pay for what we get, and I think in Lake County especially, we have outstanding first response. Um, you know, whether it's from the sheriff's department, our local police, our fire, our EMS, our hospital system in this county, it's, doesn't take long to get to a hospital. I mean, there are places even in Ohio where getting to the nearest hospital is forty-five minutes, like, you know? So, anyway, I didn't mean to get you all off on a tangent, but I think it's important that these conversations start percolating and start happening within the public consciousness because there's changes coming to Ohio in the next year, year, there's two. And I think every local entity should be having these conversations about what they would like to see happen, how they can communicate that with their legislature, legislators, and then also what are they going to do in terms of their budgets and their operations internally, um, to manage and be prepared for that environment or that, that taxing environment or whatever comes next, so. I think we're doing that, I know we have a lot of sidebar conversations, you know, over coffee and, um, I think I, that's why I feel comfortable about where we are.
Very good, thank you.
Yeah, so now you're gonna regret ever calling on me.
No, well.
Of course, like I do, yeah, yeah. All right, I already missed a meeting with the engineer cuz of this, so.
Oh, boy.
I'll, I'll have to make it up to him.
Thank you. Anybody else? Joel, you good?
I'm fantastic. I did, I gave my fifteen-second speech already, so I have my.
Very nice. Commissioners, you good? I'm gonna call this meeting to order or to, uh, close.